Let me call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. It's Tuesday, April 28th, 2015. We're at the Carson High School in Senator Square. It's a time, date, and place for the Carson City School District School Board meeting. And the first item of business is, number one, the flag salute, and Ryan Green will hear you lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our own nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have agenda item number two, and that's the adoption of the agenda. Go ahead, here are motions. We have a motion? A second. Any concerns from the board members or from the audience? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to agenda item number three, it's the superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For my report, I would simply like to say a sincere thanks and congratulations to all of our staff members who are here tonight and who are being recognized and honored. We have such a tremendous group of dedicated and talented people, and I've never worked any place that I could say that. And I'm really pleased of the folks that are here tonight and their families, and we'd like to welcome them and thank them for all of their efforts. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Agenda item number four, board reports. This is for information only, and we'll start with the Carson High School. Jake?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today at Carson High School was the ACT test for all juniors. I've heard a lot of really positive impact or input surprisingly about that. They all were very happy that they didn't have to come in during a Saturday to take the test, and they all were really happy that they got the experience before they had to pay for themselves. So they would like to thank the -- they definitely want to thank you guys for putting that on or for doing it. Tomorrow, the 29th, is the National Honor Society Blood Drive in the library all day. Come donate and save three lives. The final golf match of the year is at Arrow Creek Golf Course at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. And the Carson versus Douglas baseball game is here at 7:00 p.m. So come support our Senators, we beat Douglas. Thursday, the 30th, is girls softball versus booster at home at 3:45. Friday, May 1st, is the Big Blue Bat Blitz. Big Blue Bash for all incoming freshmen here in Senator Square at 7:00 p.m. It's a really fun event that Link Crew puts on for all the incoming eighth grader -- or upcoming freshmen, so the eighth graders this year. It's a lot of -- it's crazy and fun, and it shows you what high school's all about and how to be yourself. So if you have any eighth graders, make it a point to have them show up and be here. It's a lot of fun. Saturday, May 2nd, is Regionals for Track here. Carson High always does a great job hosting it, so look forward to another spectacular Regionals. Monday, May 4th, is the beginning of AP testing. It's also the first day of Regionals for Golf at Dayton Valley Golf Course at noon. It's an early release at 1:00 p.m., and Senior Academic Letter is at 6:00 p.m. in Senator Square right here. Tuesday, May 5th, is the second day of Regionals for Golf and is AP testing. AP testing Wednesday, May 6th, Thursday, May 7th, Friday, May 8th, and May 12th as well. Friday, May 8th, is Swimming Regionals here at the Aquatic Center for Spanish Springs at 2:00 p.m. Track Regionals on -- Mr. Casio, correct me, May 9th again? Is it two weeks? Okay. And then Swim Regionals again, that's to be determined. No school Monday, May 11th, Professional Development Day. And that concludes my report for Carson High School.
All right, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Pioneer students would like to congratulate all the staff from the district elementary, middle, and high schools being honored tonight. Thank you for dedicating your lives to building our futures. Pioneer High School will be hosting a prom at the Community Center on Saturday, May 2nd, from 6:00 to 9:00. The JAG students recently completed the fourth edition of the school newsletter. It will be -- there will be a link to -- on the school website. We would like to congratulate PHS student Brianna Roder. She will earn an honors diploma, academic letter, and she's the valedictorian candidate for the class of 2015 at Pioneer. Brianna plans on attending Sierra Nevada College next fall. We would also like to congratulate Henry Wilson on his acceptance into the New York Film Academy. On April 13th, PHS senior Shania Hicks represented Pioneer High School at the first biennial JAG Legislative Day. She met with the local representatives and the governor to advocate for the jobs for America's graduates program in Nevada. The following students will be representing Pioneer High School and the JAG program at the First Annual Career Development Conference in Las Vegas hosted by JAG Nevada. Johnny Lopez, Johnny Escobar, Kaylee Farica, Emily Johnson, Nick Monzo, Jasmine Conde, Chris Burrows, and me, Savannah Pimentel will be competing against other JAG programs from across the state in the areas of critical thinking, employability, public speaking, and creative problem solving. And thank you. This concludes activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you. Dionne?
I don't have anything today.
Me neither. Except I'd like to thank the custodial staff for everything they did to set up here tonight and what they're going to clean up. So thank you for all of that.
Nothing to report.
Just one thing. I went to the all-state band, choir, and orchestra. It's not really a competition, but there are concerts in Las Vegas. And I just want to thank the parents of all the students who qualified for that and the teachers, their band and music teachers, because they were great kids and they put on a great thing, and I think the staff should be commended for that.
Joe?
Just one quick announcement. I just wanted to congratulate all the seniors that are starting to find out about scholarships that they've won. And there is a scholarship now at the high school coming up, so if you're the parent of a senior or you are a senior, let us know how you did. There is an award tonight. We'd love to see you there and see you get your awards. They are not easy to get, and congratulations to everybody who even attempted.
Thank you. Let's go on to agenda item number five, Association Reports. Association members here. Seeing none. Agenda item number six, which is public comment. And this is set aside for any comment or any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're so inclined, have a good time and come on up. Agenda item number seven, approval of consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approved the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion is second. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, which is informational item for discussion only. Any comments or concerns from the board or regarding any of the items? Seeing none. We'll now go to the main event, agenda item number nine. This is the recognition of the 2015 Carson City School District Classified Employees of the Year, Certified Educators of the Year. Dr. Jose Delfin will now take over.
Good evening, everybody. My favorite night. You're a very beautiful audience. Most of you, mostly on this part, they're more beautiful on this side. Mostly Ben.
Ben!
Right here. So thank you for coming. Thank you for being such great staff. I have to brag about you because I work with the unions often, and I was bragging about how good Carson City is and what a great place it is to work and to live and to raise kids and all the stuff that you guys know. Because we're the best secret in all of the nation, right? So I sent my little email that I shout out to everybody the last two days. So I think I took down the email server. That was me, Janice. That wasn't anybody else. So I sent it off to Larry, who's the UNISERV director at Reno, and he said, "That is really cool, Jose." Because I always brag about us. And so now he can actually see how good we are, and we are. So I'm happy to be here to emcee the event, but it's not about me, even though I'd like it to be. But it's not. So let's get started. Firstly, you know we're driven by data. Whoop. And paper. I just want to let you know that between the teachers and the classified staff, we're looking at a grand total of 242 years of experience. Yeah, that's a lot of years. How many -- how much is that in dog years? Anybody got it? That's a lot of years in dog years, too. All right. So starting with the mighty Senators in Carson High, I'm going to have Principal Fuson come on up so she can introduce Ms. Chandler and embarrass her. I don't think she can be embarrassed. She's really very so shy and retiring. You can have that one, too.
I can have that one. Okay. Well, I am very privileged to introduce Jenny Chandler. She is honestly, I can say without a doubt, one of the most extraordinary teachers I've ever had the privilege to work with. She's looking at me, she's going to make me emotional. I actually have only worked with her this year because I'm new to Carson High School, but I can tell you from the very get-go that I knew she was going to be one of those people because she came into my office, introduced herself, and immediately jumped into, "Let's talk about student achievement. Let's talk about how we can make our school better. Let's talk about instruction. Let's talk about what we need at our school to really make things positive for our kids." When she looks at her data and her class, and it's not where she wants to be, she doesn't look at kids and say, "Well, they didn't get it." She says, "What did I do that didn't help them get it?" And that's truly the type of person she is. You know, if there's something going on at Carson High, Jenny's in the middle of it. We did 21st century learning, the digital day, Digital Learning Day. Her kids competed in a -- or participated in an online debate with a Vegas school. She's in the midst of our grading cadre that we're starting right now. When we lost our implementation specialist, she jumped in and said, "Yeah, I can be the department head, TJP, and do that, no problem." But I honestly think our kids, or her kids, have the best description of Jenny, so I'm going to read a couple statements from her kids. "Mrs. Chandler is an excellent teacher. Not only does she have a method of teaching that makes government interesting and relatable to current issues, but she takes the time to ensure that each of us understands the material. She treats us like adults while showing us that she cares for each of us individually. Of all of my AP classes, hers has prepared me for my college career the best. She definitely deserves this recognition." I have one more, and this one's kind of funny, I thought. "Mrs. Chandler understands that we have a lot going on as AP students, and she adjusts her assignments accordingly. She just gets how much it is for seniors to handle in their senior year, and that's so appreciated by all of her students. Her chill-to-teach ratio is off the charts." So Jenny, please come on up, and I'd like to present you with these flowers on this card.
You can talk, and we have a plaque for you. We actually have Mr. White, who is related to Vanna White. I don't know if you guys knew that. He will be helping distribute your stuff.
Well, I don't know how this works, so we'll just start off easy here. I would just like to -- I would like to thank my colleagues. It's such an honor to represent my fellow teachers at Carson High School, all of whom are people who are always around to challenge me and have constantly served as my sounding board because I always need someone to help me think through things. I would like to thank both my administration for being so supportive and encouraging to me and to this district who offers me every opportunity and is always willing to kind of color outside the box when I'm interested in different things, and I appreciate it very much. So thank you very much.
And then my Classified Staff Member of the Year, Dean. Dean, are you here? He's actually probably working and hiding because he's not the type of person who likes to be recognized publicly. No? All right. Well, let me tell you about Dean. Honestly, he was one of the very, very first person -- people I met when I got this job. He made it a point to come in to my office and to introduce himself to me. He is a fantastic gentleman, and when I asked his colleagues why they elected him for this particular --
I have to change his picture.
That's not Dean. That's Dean! So when I asked his colleagues why they elected him for this, they said he was reliable, helpful, friendly, positive, and just an all-around good guy. And I would have to definitely second those things. He has been at Carson High for a long time. He is one of the faces that you see constantly in and around when you come to our school. He's highly visible, knows the kids, talks to the kids, is always there for teachers and super responsible for any -- or responsive to anything we ask of him. So I would like to celebrate Dean, and if you happen to see him, because you see his picture now, skulking around back there sometime during the evening, I want everyone to turn around and go, "Dean!", and then we'll give him a big round of applause. But otherwise, congratulations to Dean.
Mr. Zona, you're up. Come on up.
Good evening. Our Certified Staff of the Year is Tony Brown this evening. Tony has been at Pioneer for six years. We stole him from Douglas County, and no fear saying that, I'm very happy about it. As a science teacher, he helped improve course options and brought the school's first chemistry class to our school. Tony has been instrumental as a teacher recruiter. He's brought other highly talented staff to come work at our school, which I'm very thankful for. Tony has also helped overhaul our master schedule. His ideas and creativity increased staff collaboration time within the schedule. Also because of Tony, we have about 1,080 minutes of extra class time per year, per class. You didn't hear that. But that's also because of his wife, who's a mathematical genius, and she's here tonight. She's a math teacher in Douglas. So thank you to Tony's Mrs. Brown. As a tutor in science and math, Tony encouraged students to participate, and he has a high rate of passing the proficiency. He tutors after school for science and math. We really appreciate those efforts. In his spare time, he's a professional rock climbing guide, and he guides in Yosemite National Park. He also started a partnership with Rock Sport, and what they do is they go to Reno and they take our students out several times per year, and they earn PE and elective credits, and they climb walls, and it's very safe. Looking at the attorney right now, and getting some eyes. We've never had an accident. It's all paid for. So anyways, Tony's kids get to participate when they show they have good grades and they have good attendance, and that's what I love about that program. Because we have a lot of students, we fill vans, and they have to earn to go -- they have to earn it to go there. Tony also serves as the school's technology liaison. He brings his creativity every day, his reliability, his passion to show students a better way of life. That's what he does. He's the kind of teacher who came to me and said, "Give me all of the most struggling students on this campus and put them in my first period class." And I had to have him repeat that, and I said, "Okay, we can try that." He designed a curriculum to help them with their study habits. It's phenomenal. And so that's what he does. He actually helps them with strategies for dealing with everyday life. That's what Tony does. So Mr. Brown, thank you for supporting -- or Mrs. Brown, thank you for supporting your husband, and we have many Browns here tonight. We have Annie and Bear. Thank you all. I don't see them running around. But thank you for sharing your dad's talent with Pioneer family. We really appreciate you, and I'd like to introduce Tony Brown at this time. Last year I had flowers for the ladies. This year, gift cards.
All those things you just said are mostly true. No, I just want to -- I represent one of eight classified staff at Pioneer, and I put it out to the board and everybody here. We're doing the best we can to change the lives of the kids that are at Pioneer. Elijah and I, you'll meet Elijah here in a minute. We come up with the best strategies we can to change the world and make the youth a little bit better over at Pioneer. So thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, is it true you posed for that sculpture right up there?
Sorry. I'm sure.
All right, just one. So our next staff member I'd like to introduce is a Classified Staff of the Year. His name is Elijah Roder. Eleven years ago, before I got to the school, Elijah showed up at Pioneer, and the first thing he did was write a $30,000 grant for our school. And from that funding, he met with Dr. Selby of Project Discovery, and he started that partnership at our school. That was initially for the most struggling students we had. We then saw it work so well, that partnership and that Project Discovery works on building teamwork, social skills, problem solving. It worked so well with our group of students that we brought it to all of our students. After that, we brought it to our staff in 2008. And so really, it's because of that relationship 11 years ago and his writing a grant and having the foresight, that has changed our school and it's made us what we are today. And I can really say we have a dream team because of that. So I am very appreciative of what he did. So Elijah was recently highlighted before kids knew he was going to be honored. He was honored in a student letter. But I'd like to read to you what a student said before they knew all this. It was entitled, "Mr. Elijah. Mr. Elijah is a self-sacrificing leader. His straightforward attitude is appreciated throughout the entire school. He is a guiding force for our Project Discovery and Rock Creek trips. These trips give us students a chance to grow and experience life outside of the school. He is a man of his word and incredibly trustworthy. On top of that, he is kind, generous, and understanding. Thank you, Mr. Elijah." Elijah also has a very talented family. In fact, two of his daughters have left a positive note on our school, and I'm very thankful. We have his daughter Lexi, who designed the Panther climbing logo, and that's now part of our crest or coat of arms, and that's something she did. His other daughter Brianna is a current Pioneer student. She earned the highest GPA, 4.3 something, something, and she is a candidate for the valedictorian, so congratulations to her. I know that the success of Elijah at Pioneer is really due to the support of his loving and supportive wife, Ramona, and his three daughters. So special thanks to them. Elijah, thank you for being a role model educator, a force of school improvement, a team-building guru, and for being a mentor to our students and staff. Congratulations, Elijah.
Thanks to the best principal in the world, Jason Zona, to incredible staff that I work with that make it possible to do some of the things that I do. Mostly the students I'd like to thank for allowing me to be a part of their lives, and that's what I keep coming back for. Thank you very much.
She's the voice of Pioneer. Thank you very much. Takes a lot of guts to get up here, so congratulations.
We're going to move down to Carson Middle School, and Mr. Sadler, come on up. Now, Mr. Sadler does not know I'm allergic to every flower known to man, but that's okay. He can just stand right here. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Always one in every group.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me, or I need to lean forward more? We're good? Okay. First of all, thank you to our awesome school district and school board for taking this evening to recognize all of the wonderful educators, employees in our district. It really means a lot, and I'm proud to be part of that. Mr. Conley, I'll give you your $10 back because they don't have a Principal of the Year, so I did have a vote in for you, but there was no category there. Something that's probably not news to anybody in this room is that teachers work extremely hard, contrary to some belief out there that teachers have a cush job and get off early and have all these vacation days and have summers at the beach. The truth is that teachers spend a tremendous amount of time and energy perfecting lessons, creating expectations, and certainly shaping young minds. For many years, teachers were responsible solely for their classroom and their domain, and, you know, they really said what was acceptable and what's not. They set the tone for learning in their classrooms, something that certainly still is in place today. And this may come as a shock to some of you, with a roomful of educators and those who work closely with educators and those who live with educators and put up with educators, that teachers aren't always excited or jumping out of the boat to try something new. Some of you might even say that we can be resistant to change as educators. We get kind of comfortable with what we're doing. Part of that's because teachers perfect their craft, and they get really good at it. Amy Robinson is an educator who thinks outside the box and challenges herself daily so that she can challenge her students. She challenges the status quo and works to improve the education and the lives of those in her classroom every day. She's a leader of change at Carson Middle School. She's an innovator in the classroom. I wanted to share a story about Mrs. Robinson in the classroom. I spent a lot of time over the years in her classroom observing, but I don't have any specific stories because every time I'm in her room, I find myself learning and engaging as if I'm a student, and I'm learning something new about science that I didn't know. So it's easy for me to get distracted and get caught up in that moment myself. Those who work with her would agree, she's very calm, accommodating to her students. She connects with her students in a way that is seldom seen. She facilitates learning to the nth degree. She's a leader within our school. She serves as the Science Department Chair. She's been a catalyst for change through the support of the Race to the Top district and all we've implemented at Carson Middle School. She's been a leader within our department chairs. She does so many great things for our school. An example of her caring for our students is recently we had a meeting with a student who's well below grade level in reading, and teachers and administrators were at this meeting trying to figure out some strategies. How can we help this student? And I would say that we left the meeting without anything really in place other than, "Hey, we've got to come up with some ideas here." And I got an email from my Dean of Students, Mrs. Crookshanks, that Mrs. Robinson had contacted her later that evening. Must have been about 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, which just wasn't sitting well with her. And Mrs. Robinson, who's not an English teacher, she's a science teacher with a background in elementary education, had volunteered herself to challenge herself to work with that student one-on-one to try to improve his reading skills and put herself out there moving forward next year to work with some of our more challenging students and students who really need some interventions. And she's just that type of teacher. She's willing to put herself out there to go above and beyond for her students. Amy's had a significant impact on our school, not only for the student learning, but everything that we've done in trying to improve the education of our students. Everything she's done has impacted our school in a positive way. We have a plethora of really good, magnificent teachers. We have a plethora of really good, magnificent teachers in our school and in our district. And I can honestly say that working with Amy's made me a better principal and leader. And I'm so thankful to have her on our team. She's a dynamic, influential educator. She has an incredibly contagious passion for education and learning. In my 18 years as a professional educator, I've worked along some fantastic teachers. And Mrs. Robinson is simply one of the best. And I'm delighted to honor Mrs. Robinson as the Carson Middle School Educator of the Year.
I want to say thank you because he said he was going to talk about my weaknesses. Actually, really happy that you...
Good friend.
Oh, yeah. It's such an honor to be selected as Carson Middle School Teacher of the Year. I work with lots and lots of amazing teachers, so to be nominated by Phyllis and then to be selected is truly an honor. We've done lots of really great stuff at the middle school level with our science curriculum in the last year, well, almost two years now. And I just want to thank our school administration and the district administration for giving us the time and the autonomy to do that. We've done some incredible stuff and I think it's having a great impact on our students. And I just want to thank everybody for that. Thank you.
It is also my privilege and honor to congratulate Mrs. Leslie Zabelski as the Carson Middle School Classified Employee of the Year. Mrs. Zabelski works in our school as a special education paraprofessional. Certainly goes above and beyond her duties on a daily basis. Mrs. Zabelski works with some very challenging students in supporting their needs and also supporting our classroom teachers and does a great job helping students stay organized and focused on their academic studies. Mrs. Zabelski is the type of person who just spreads joy when she's in a classroom. She's a team player, always willing to do what's asked of her, has some great ideas that she solicits to help us improve. An example that I can share with you is that for the last couple of years, when we have different holidays coming up, Mrs. Zabelski's taken it upon herself to create like little bags of cookies and little gift baskets to give our staff just to kinda keep everybody in the holiday cheer for different holidays throughout the year. We had a staff Christmas party a couple of years ago. Mrs. Zabelski is an accomplished musician, proud grandmother and mother of many fine musicians. Her husband's a musician and music teacher here at Carson High School. She brought her flute to our Christmas party and entertained the staff. She had a little CD playing with music and she entertained our staff. She's just always wanting to help out and contribute and she does a fantastic job working with our students. We're happy to have her on staff and please join me in congratulating Mrs. Leslie Zabelski.
It is quite a privilege and an honor to be here and I can't say enough about the Carson Middle School staff. I learn something new from the staff every day, I learn something new from the students every day. And it is just such an honor to be part of that and to be part of Carson City School District, especially Carson Middle School. Thank you.
They're talking about me up here already. Talking in front of my back. Alright, Mr. Conley, you over there somewhere? Okay, as he's making his... What kinda shirt is that? Is it teal? What is that? What's up with the shoes again? Conley, look at you. He's like a penguin here. Alright, now that I've completely insulted him, I didn't put $10 in for Mr. Conley for Principal of the Year.
$10 bucks, really, that's what I'm worth?
That's it.
Thanks.
I took it back, though.
Oh, I get this. I wanted that, I wanted to go singing. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Delphin is just jealous because he know he doesn't have this kinda style and he couldn't pull it off. But anyway. It's okay. It's okay, Dr. Delphin. And Mr. Sadler, let's be honest, I owe you hundreds of dollars for keeping me out of hot water, so thank you. And I love you. Good job. I want to introduce as my Certified Teacher of the Year, I don't even know who this man is standing over here because I don't, I've never seen him in a tie. So get up here, Kevin. This is Kevin Ply. He's one of our PE teachers. And I've got a couple of things that I want to say, more than a couple. First of all, I'm in a little bit of shock because he's in a tie and he actually looks very good. And so I'm proud of his wife who couldn't make it here because I know she's taking care of kids, but I'm gonna say how proud I am of you to your wife, okay? I'm gonna make a good report. Looking at Kevin, you'd think, pretty athletic guy, he's a PE teacher, but honestly, he's not very graceful. He's had an ACL surgery, I think he had a jacked-up back a few years ago. I think he fell down some stairs a while back. And so you'd think that as a PE teacher, huh, that's kind of, those are kinda odd traits. But the good thing is, is he's got really good hair. And I'm jealous of his hair. But beyond that, I have to tell you in all seriousness, Mr. Ply is one of those guys that we are short a lot of times on subs for PE, you would imagine, middle school PE. Nobody wants to sub for that. And so Mr. Ply just says, "Don't worry, Conley, I'll just take both classes." So he'll take classes of upwards to 40 to 50 to 60 kids sometimes. Not to mention he also works with our CLS kids, who are the severely disabled kids as well. And he incorporates the regular ed kids, you know, the 7th and 8th grade boys. He'll have them work with the CLS students and he's got all sorts of plans made out for them. And I mean, and so he makes it a learning experience for all the kids. And I think, I just think that takes a special talent. He's very creative. I just start laughing and shaking my head sometimes because I'll look into the new gym that we have and I will see, I swear to God, every piece of equipment that I own in the PE department on the floor incorporated into some sort of like obstacle course. And he spends hours on this stuff. And of course, he's going through it with the kids. And then he says, "Come on, Conley," and I have to go in and try it too. So he's kinda like a big kid, which I love because at middle school, we really need that big kid. But along with being a big kid, he's a very good role model and a mentor because he will sit and talk to these boys, and again, middle school boys, scary, about making right choices, about what it is to be a young man. And I just think that is so, so important in today's educational world. And I don't think we get enough of that sometimes. And last but not least, he is a very proud dad. He's got quite the couple of sons that are awesome athletes and he likes bragging about them, as well he should. And so with that, I'm very proud to announce Mr. Kevin Ply as my Eagle Valley Teacher of the Year.
Wow. Thank you. Really appreciate that. You know, as educators, we try to inspire, we try to cultivate, and you get to watch and see what happens. When I talk to kids, I never know who's going to get after whatever we're talking about. When I was here at Carson High, had a sophomore get caught by the baseball team and three years later, he turns into a state champ pole vaulter. When I was here at Carson High doing adaptive PE, we would. We would focus on the students, the peer tutors, because those are the guys that are gonna drive our program forward with the CLS kids and make it a good experience for them. It's not about the teachers, it's about planting seeds. I'm excited about tonight because I get to see one of those, ooh, students of mine receive a Classified Employee of the Year for Eagle Valley. And so I'm really pumped up about that. It's a great place to work, it's exciting to get out there and get after it every day and all we need is more equipment.
We don't have any more space.
Mr. Ply. Mr. Ply. I just wanted, Mr. Conley, to know this is the second time you've been in a tie this year because you have one there. And you've been dapper. He just doesn't know it, right?
That's true. I used to work at Big Five part-time and I had to wear a tie there, so I actually have a few, but my wife kinda finds them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carly, where are you at? She's shy, you gotta come up. Again, I have picked, I haven't picked, my staff picked the employees with the nicest hair. Because again, she's got a lot of it, again, I'm jealous of it. This is Carly Bianchi. She is a CLS parapro. CLS again is our comprehensive life skills, the severely handicapped kids. And I'll tell you what, a few real simple but very important things about Carly. She is bubbly. This girl, no matter what, she kinda walks around and even if you're cranky that day, you look at her, she smiles, she says good morning, and she lights up the room a little bit, which I think, you know, again, is what our kids need. Working with other adults in such a, in such close proximity, because we've got, what, five or six adults in there? That's tough. And so, you know, to work with adults, I think is probably more difficult sometimes than working with kids. But Carly's always kinda the calming factor in that classroom. And that's what I think I really appreciate about her is that she just does her job, she works with the kids. And working with some of those kids, you have to be patient, you have to be tough, but you have to be loving all the same time. And I honestly, I don't know how CLS parapros do that. And I don't know how Carly every day does it with a smile on her face. She gets head-butted for God's sake and she still smiles. And...
Only twice.
Only twice.
And I got scratched once.
Yeah. And, you know, other wounds that we won't, we haven't reported probably to the district, so we probably won't. Also, I have to tell you that the teachers say a lot of positive things about her and so they really like her being in the class, you know, pushing in with the CLS kids. And so I think I shocked Carly the other night. I went to the Aces game and before dinner, we were at a little restaurant and I see Carly walk in and she didn't notice me right away. And she's kinda, she actually kinda let loose, which I have never seen. And she was having fun in a respectful manner, but I look over and she looks at me and all of a sudden I see her turn bright red and she goes like this. She literally does this. And so finally, she notices, I notice her and I walk out and I'm just like, hey Carly. And we haven't talked about it because I don't want to embarrass her in public or anything with it, so... But anyway, Carly's a special girl, young, a lot of talent, a lot of years to go, which is great to have somebody like this in our district with a long future ahead of them. So congratulations, Carly. Very good. Say something.
I guess I have to say something and I blame my friend Micah. He's right there and I was just, I think I was complaining about work or something. And also I was like, oh crap, that's my boss. And they started laughing at me. Yeah. But thank you and whatnot and I love my kids. My sister's signing to me.
Very good.
That's it. And Mr. Ply was also my favorite teacher, one of my favorite teachers in high school.
Alright.
Good job, Carly. We talk about Mr. Conley often behind his back too, so...
I'm not the only one.
No respect, no respect here. Alright, I think we're ready at Boarderwick, right? Are we, are we good? Yes, we're good. With that, Mrs. Sims, come on up. From Boarderwick Bray, we have Principal Sims and our Vice Principal, Ms. Lisa.
Good evening. It is such a pleasure to be here on this occasion at a school board meeting because we are honoring the people that really make a difference for our children. At Boarderwick Bray this year, the staff nominated and selected Ms. Lindsay Evans as our Educator of the Year. And Ms. Lindsay Evans is a true educator. Lindsay is our 5th grade gate teacher who has taken on the position of also being the gate coordinator. So she has been the gatekeeper of the gate program at Boarderwick, which has been a very interesting ride in many ways, especially with the increase of our gate population. Ms. Evans also came to me last spring, she and Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Sprague, all excited about STEM education. And I had a little bit of exposure to STEM education at Eagle Valley and I'm thinking, how is this gonna work? They're going, we'll make it work, we'll make it work. And indeed, they have made it work. And they have been able to bring science, technology, English, engineering, math, art, all together in one great package. Their vision for our elementary school has been exciting and a little unknown at times, but extremely exciting. Ms. Evans is also a leader among her peers. She goes beyond the normal school hour like every dedicated teacher does. She does her outside professional development. All of last year, she was finishing up her masters and swore she would never take another class. Well, that didn't last very long because she is now working on her gate endorsement, her STEM endorsement, and any other endorsement she thinks will help her along. She also works after-school hours with our Dolphin Club. So not only does she work with our gate students during the day, but after school, she works with those students that just need that extra push and tutoring and making sure that they can acquire the necessary skills to be proficient. And in that respect, Ms. Evans is always advocating for her students. And all of her students are the 650 students at Boarderwick Bray. So it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lindsay Evans.
I'm just really embarrassed about the picture behind me right now. We talked about that?
We'll talk about that in a minute.
I want to say thank you to the board for your time and dedication. It really is a community effort. Thank you to my great administrative staff because they really do support everything that we say, hey, let's try this. And Boarderwick really is a good collaborative working environment, it really is a great place. So I want to thank my colleagues and especially to my family for them allowing me to do what I do and for their support. So, thanks.
Well, I am embarrassing Lindsay because I didn't know when I took her picture, she was coming back from Reno, right? You had a PD thing going on at Reno, so you, well, she drove down carefully, I want to say. Got down to the panel interview and she, I didn't know this. And she was just, you know, running kinda ragged at that point. And she did not want a camera in her face and look what I did to her. See? See what happens? Thanks, Lindsay.
It is also my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Jennifer Rojas, our Classified Employee of the Year. Jennifer is the first face you see when you enter Boarderwick Bray and she always has a smile on her face. She is very accommodating to our parents and to our teachers and to our students. Jennifer's bilingual, which has really helped to bridge communication for our school with our parents. Jennifer is also working on her degree as she works full-time at Boarderwick. At night, she's been taking classes at WNC and her ultimate goal is to be a nurse, which we all find very interesting at school because she has a real affinity to blood. But that's okay, we will, we'll help you through that, Jennifer. She's also very active with her 2nd grade student, son, Angel, and very proud of all the accomplishments that Angel acquires throughout the school day and in swimming and in other activities. Jennifer brings a sense of humor to our office and she is so, so vitally important to the workings of our everyday, very busy office. And being an office specialist in an elementary school is a full, full commitment. So it's with my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Jennifer Rojas.
I am truly...
I am truly honored to receive this award. I, I don't really know what to say, I'm very thankful for a lot of things. I, you know, I'm very thankful for my family, they've just been very supportive with me going to school and working full-time, and it's just such a great pleasure to have this award. Thank you everyone.
Jennifer was in class tonight, and she didn't ditch, I told her to, because this was more important, but she didn't. Good job Jennifer. From Empire, we have Mr. Bacon. Oh, and some flowers. You know, I did call Mr. Bacon the Baconator today. I did. I really did, didn't I?
Yeah, thank you for that introduction.
The Baconator speaks.
Okay, for those who don't know me, Ms. Allred is still the principal. I, just filling in for her while she's out sick. I asked Ms. Helen Anne to come with me, because I was not doing this alone. First I'd like to talk about Ms. Marler. When I thought about what I wanted to say about Mrs. Marler, the first thing that came to my mind was hard work. She comes to, to school ready to work and to do the best that she can for her children. She's well-prepared, and when you go into her class, it's a, for lack of better words, just a fun environment. The kids really enjoy being there, and she always has what's best in mind for our children. She's very positive and energetic around her school. It's nice to see that smiling face as you walk around, especially when you're not having the best of days. She does work hard in finding ways to motivate students, and actively involves the parents that she works with as well. I spoke to others around the school to get, to get their ideas on why they would have voted for her, and one thing I heard is she's always seeking new ideas and sharing her own, and she's very open to coaching. In addition, she's a member of our SIP team, a responsibility she took on this year and has done a great job with that. We were also having a hard time getting community members into our school. I approached her about being a chair of that committee, and right away, we started seeing a growth in, in getting community members to support our school. So, I would like to have you all help me welcome Ms. Marler up here, I'm sorry.
I hate getting up in front of a crowd. I want to say thank you to my staff and my kids. I think that with the environment I have, it's not hard to succeed. The staff is always there to support me, they're always there with great ideas, and my kids in the classroom are always there helping each other out and helping me with new ideas and thoughts. So it's very exciting. A thank you to my family, my husband putting up with all of those extra school hours I put in, and my kids. I'm very excited, every day my little daughter says, are you gonna go teach those kids? Yes, I'm gonna go teach those kids. So, my head's on straight and I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Our Classified Employee of the Year is Mrs. Jean Reamer, she's our school librarian. I still remember when we interviewed Mrs. Reamer for this position, and we asked a question, why would you want to be the librarian at, at our site? And I never, will forget her answer, she said, I've always looked for the opportunity to instill a love of reading in kids. And I'd like to tell her mission accomplished. Our kids really do have a love of reading, and they do enjoy their library experience. She set a book fair record at Empire, we, I think it was over $5,000 that she had earned there. And she did that through, she had a lot of creative ways of promoting it, getting the kids excited about it, and we had just a huge turnout, as shown by the money that she was able to raise. She, she's someone else who also likes to integrate the students into lessons, she's not just a lecture person. If you go into the library, it's a warm, fun place to be, the students are very engaged and involved in what's going on. And I know that she does set a time, aside time during her library time for our students to read, I think for up to 15 to 20 minutes a day, which I think helps instill that love of reading that they have. So please help me in welcoming Mrs. Jean Reamer, and congratulations.
I'm a 2nd year at Empire, and even though I'm just a 2nd year, it almost feels like forever, because I have 5 kids of my own. Steven's 26, Katie's almost 24, Luke's 22, David and Zach, who are with us, 7th grade and 4th grade. And now I have over 600 more children, because I'm the librarian over at Empire. And so I made my list of thanks, and it's alphabetical, it's not according to the Dewey Decimal System, so bear with me. I'd like to thank my administration, the school board, our community at large, our dedicated district employees, our fantabulous empowered educators, my family, both my family, my husband Greg, the 2 boys, and my kids that are here and everywhere, and the kids at Empire and their families. They make learning exciting, I get to empower them, I get to edify them every day, although sometimes it's a little more challenging than I thought. They get to learn something new, I get to learn something new. As far as the reading that Mr. Bacon mentioned, I have 4th graders begging me for stories now that will either make them feel or make them cry. I don't know how we got on this crying jag, but I read a book called The Faithful Elephants, and then I got them to make a connection between Ron McNair, who couldn't take out library books, because he was a man of color back in the day. And then we brought him over to the fact that he was a gentleman that got his doctorate, and was in fact Dr. McNair that died in the Challenger Flight. And my kids made that connection. They found the book in the library, they came screaming at me, Mrs. Reamer, we found the book! Because I had read Ron's Big Mission. So when you get to do that every day, your job's a delight. And I want to thank all of you for this honor. Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta pick up your stuff. All right. Thank you for that inspiring message, Mrs. Reamer. And Mrs. Helen Anne, you rock, that is a great outfit. I don't know how you guys do it in heels. And I saw you walk backwards once with them. All right, good job. From Fremont, we have Principal Gillis. I see Mrs. Quisenberry come on up.
What a wonderful night. Our district does so many great things, but tonight is one of the best we do. And Mr. Brown and I, on behalf of the Fremont family, want to introduce our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sarah Quisenberry. Sarah is, yeah! Sarah teaches a 3rd grade class with our ELL cluster. Now, early on in her career, Sarah had the misguided idea she was going to be in middle school. And so she came to us in kind of a roundabout journey, and at this point, you're never leaving us. You can't go back. Sarah has such high expectations for her students, that they're going to collaborate, acknowledge diversity, and persevere and work hard. When I visit her room, her students know their learning targets, and they can tell you the progress they're making toward proficiency. One of my favorite stories is, she was, it was a writing activity, and I was down talking to one of her little guys, and I said, so, how are you doing, are you, you know, in writing, are you, how are you doing? And he got real serious, and he got real close, and he said, well, last week I sucked. But then, my teacher helped me with the rubric, and now I am awesome. So, she's doing the job. Sarah's own words are, students need to have a teacher who believes that they can accomplish anything. That's how Sarah teaches, and that's how she treats her children. And they do succeed. Consistently, year after year, her students have the highest percentage of progress and proficiency in our school, so she's doing the right thing. Sarah gives so much to our school with all the extracurricular events, such as the monthly parent nights, PTA events. This year, she was teaching for us the after-school program for our ELL students, and that was a paid position. However, Sarah's been doing that for 3 years before anybody ever could pay her for it. She just did it on a voluntary basis, because she knew the kids needed the help. Now, she doesn't look it, but I'm told from her colleagues that she is the taskmaster of the 3rd grade. She keeps them online, at their PLCs and their weekly training, and they don't question. She's a lifelong learner. She has her masters in TESL. This year, she's completing, in fact, I think on the 17th of May, completes her final work for her masters in reading. And along with that, she did the ICE, the training all year to be an IC member. So when you put all these attributes together, master teacher, true professional, teacher leader, and you put them into an unassuming package, you have Sarah. She may speak quietly, but when she speaks, you need to listen. We are so proud to have Sarah at our school.
I just want to thank the Carson City School District for this honor, and the support of the administration, and the staff support and collaboration, and especially my 3rd grade team, and my students make it an honor to teach at Fremont.
Mrs. O'Brien, will you come up and join us? Mrs. Nikki O'Brien is our Library Media Specialist, and she was chosen by her colleagues as our Classified Person of the Year. Nikki has been at our school as our Library Specialist for the last couple of years, but she is from a family of educators, so teaching students is in her DNA. For years before she was our Specialist, she subbed at our school, so we knew what kind of quality we were getting. She uses good teaching strategies every day in, in the work she does. Again, they know, students know their learning targets, key vocabulary, and real-life application of the knowledge that they're getting. And she uses engagement strategies, so that students are always actively learning, actively engaged. Again, we have another employee who gives so much of their own time for extracurricular activities, from our monthly lunch bunch, to our family nights, to PTA events. And I have so many families, parents coming in to me now, saying how comfortable they feel in the library, because of the warm, welcoming way that Mrs. O'Brien treats them. Through the one-to-one mobile technology project, she has been our resource person, she has helped with professional development, and kept us on track. One more story of what Nikki is about. This year, along with her other specialists, they gave time every afternoon from October on to work with our students to get them prepared for the S-Back testing. She worked with a team in classrooms every afternoon, helping students get comfortable with the technology and comfortable with taking the test. We can't begin to thank Nikki for all she does for us, but we can certainly honor her.
I just want to say thank you, I was very surprised, because I just was, I always think about other people winning these, not me. It's always an adventure in the library, and every day is different. I like to have fun, but also instill the value of what the library is, and how much knowledge and vast amounts of resources are available in, inside those 4 walls.
All right, thank you Fremont. Oh, don't forget your flowers. Alrighty, where are we? We are at Fritsch Elementary School. Come on up. Mrs. Gary, and probably Mr. Walker, I saw him somewhere. Oh, Mrs. Gary, when I see you, I want to sing Miss America, I don't know why.
I don't either. Good evening everyone. I'd like to introduce to you Kristi Ann Wertz, our Fritsch Certified Teacher of the Year. I've known Kristi for the past 8 years, because she's been a 1st grade teacher at Fritsch, but she too started her career out with the older students. We're certainly glad that she made the big switch, and came to the elementary school. I can honestly say that Kristi is one of the best teachers that I have ever met. Being trustworthy, kind, and an extremely hard worker, I think her greatest strength is her love and compassion for children, and for education and excellence. I would have to say though, that her computer and technology skills are right up there as well. She uses a Smartboard technology regularly and just flips around and gets up there, she's an expert. And she seeks out opportunities on a regular basis to enhance her lessons through the world of technology, the kids love it. She's often sought by her colleagues to solve technical problems and issues as well as they arise. When you walk through Kristi's room, even for a brief observation or conversation, it becomes readily apparent that she's there to teach, and the students are there to learn. You'll also find her with clothespins, clothespins, in her hair on a regular basis, she'll have to tell you about that. This is one of the classroom management strategies that she uses to build the students' confidence and well-being. In addition to her hard work at school, Mrs. Wertz has 2 adorable daughters, and actively participates in her church and community. She is a role model for us all.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, and it's, I wouldn't be here without the staff that I work with, and the administration and the district with all the professional development that we've done with the, the ever-changing stuff that happens in education. Just the support from everyone that I work with, and students, it's just so fun to come every day, and the next year, when they come running up to you and saying hi, and like, oh yeah, I miss you, and it's, it's just really nice to see all those smiling faces every day. Thank you.
She's Star Trek by Mr. Sorezak over here. You stunned her, Mr. Sorezak.
Our Classified Employee of the Year is Mrs. Lynette Putzer, who is our Office Manager. Ms. Putzer?
Oh, there she is.
Lynette has been with the Carson City School District for the past 13 years, and for the past 5, she's served in the capacity of Office Manager at Fritsch. She handles the stresses of our busy front office with poise and grace. She's accurate and diligent in her work, overcoming constant interruptions. She's accurate and diligent in her work, overcoming constant interruptions to complete her work in a timely and precise manner. Lynette handles all of our payroll data entry, order supplies, she does the substitute scheduling, budgets, student files, you name it, she does it. And she just makes sure things run smoothly. Mrs. Putzer, Lynette, is friendly, compassionate, flexible, and caring, intelligent, and analytical. Her insights are extremely valuable, and her advice is often sought in our day-to-day operations of the school by other staff members, students, and parents as well. Lynette is always one of the first to volunteer to help out with anything, and you can often find her in the cafeteria, or being a crossing guard, or even teaching our artist-in-residence, and she's even been a substitute librarian. So she's creative thinker, always finding solutions to our problems, and helping in any situation. I appreciate Lynette and all she does, and I know the staff does as well. So, thank you, Lynette, for all you do.
I'd like to introduce everybody to somebody. This is Flat Stanley. Okay, I thought, you're in education, you know who Flat Stanley is. He's from Santee, California, and I thought, what a great place to take him, to a school board meeting. So, that's where he's going on his geographical trip, is to a school board meeting. I'd just like to say I'm honored and humbled by my coworkers nominating me for this, to represent Fritsch Elementary School as the Classified Employee of the Year. They're wonderful to work with. It's a great school.
Thank you, Mrs. Gary. All right, from the mighty Mark Twain, we have Ruth Lee Calario and Mr. Shelby Tunnel. Ruth Lee, you are more stylish than Mr. Conley, I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
He thinks he is.
I appreciate that.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm so happy to see you, and it's just such a great time for us to be able to honor our colleagues and the people that work so dedicatedly hard every single day to make sure that our students get what they need to get to be successful. So today, I want to share with you a little bit about our Certified Employee of the Year. I'm honored to introduce you to Ms. Sharon Hyman Dinger. She is not known as Sharon to us, she's known as Sherry, and that's what we call her. She's a great lady, she's so positive with her students. I want to share a few little things about Sherry with you. Sherry has been in education for a while. She's taught kindergarten, she's taught 1st grade, she spent a little time in 2nd grade, and then she finally saw the light and moved to 5th grade. And so, she does a great job with those 5th grade students, and I know many of you in this audience of students have been the recipient of her great education and her expertise. A few things I want to share with you about Sherry is this. Sherry has served many pieces at Mark Twain. She's been on through the numerous alphabets of IC, SIP, S-I-T-R-T-I. I think I've got them all, IC, I think I have many of them, but she has served tirelessly with that. She also started the GATE program at Mark Twain when it was in its infancy, and she's been as a GATE teacher for 5th grade, I believe this is her sixth year? Her sixth year. She just is such a collaborative person, and she works really hard with that piece. One thing I want to share with you that many of you may not know, but Sherry was instrumental in bringing Mastery Connect to the Carson City School District. She collaborated with a team member in 5th grade, and together, they created this project that really allowed us to look at data and drive our instruction with that. And for that, I'm truly grateful that she taught us how to do it with a fine-tooth comb. Her students in her classroom know exactly where they are at and how they are doing based on the data that she inputs into Mastery Connect continuously. I want to thank her family for supporting her. She comes from a long line of educators, but I want to thank her family for joining her and supporting her on this journey. It is my distinct honor, though, to introduce you to you. I have one little story I want to share with you that just really tells me the heart of Sherry, is where her soul is. And I just need to tell you that she is so, she's especially drawn to the students that are in need, both emotionally and academically. And you can see it in her face and her attitude when she talks to you about those students, and how passionate she truly is about those students. And she takes it home with her, and she thinks about it, and she comes back to you, and she talks to you about it, and says, "What about this? What about this?" And so, this is something, education is not just a job that she does during the day, it's something that she lives with moment to moment to moment. So it's my honor to introduce to you to Ms. Sherry Hyman Dinger.
I may be the first person who cries up here. I hope not, but I do want to thank the school board. I'd like to thank my administrators, Ruth Lee and Shelby, because they bring such an atmosphere of positivity and encouragement to our staff and our whole school. I'd like to thank the entire staff at Mark Twain. We're always saying that we're a family, and we truly are. I hold every single one of the staff at Mark Twain in such high esteem, especially my 5th grade team, Stacy, and Dot, and Jeremy. I couldn't do anything without them, really. I would just be an island without them. We collaborate so closely. There's no "I" or "me" in our team. It's always "we" or "our," and we're constantly sharing with each other, so I thank them so much for that. I thank the teachers in the entire district, because I think pretty much everybody that you're honoring today, I've been in a class with, I've learned so much from, we work so closely together, many, many classes with you and committees. So, thank you for everything that you do. I'd also like to thank my family, they're so supportive. I really do bring everything home. You've heard so many stories, you've heard my heart, you've felt my tears, you've held me up, you've pushed me forward, so thank you so much for that. And the students, just like everybody else has pretty much said, one of my former students even tonight said that, I've been an inspiration to her, and that's why I do it. You inspire me, as much as I inspire you, I hope. So, when you tell me that you love to read now because of me, that's reward enough.
It was my great pleasure that I introduced to you Mark Twain's Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Sidney Abbott. Sidney is one of those kind of people that you look at her and you think, "Oh, okay, she can do this." She started at Mark Twain as a 3 and 3/4 hour paraprofessional, and she served in our lunchroom and as an SFA tutor. And for those of you that don't know what SFA means, it's our reading program. And so, that serves the most struggling students across the grade levels. And then Sidney became a full-time kindergarten paraprofessional when that position opened. And Sidney does the same in there. She's become such an essential and a vital part of that team, that today, when I pulled her out to help proctor with the S-Back testing, they begged me not to make her go. And I said, "Oh, I really need her." So she's one of those kind of people that are so versatile, that you can just put her wherever she needs to be, and she does it happily. A couple of things that Sidney had shared to me, and I got to put this up so I can see with my blind, old eyes. One of the things that she shared with me when she moved to kindergarten was that she didn't really get to see all the kids anymore, that when she was in the lunchroom, that she had the opportunity to check in with them and see how they were doing. And so, this is something you see Sidney doing all the time. She'll walk the hallways during her break, or when she's on her way to something, or dropping some students off. She'll stop by, and she'll check in with those former students, see how they're doing. "How's your day going? How'd you do on that reading test? What's going on well with you?" And she'll make those connections with them, even if they're not her students anymore. She is a dedicated team player. She works very well with the kindergarten team, and they find her to be a vital, essential part of their team. She is someone who I think, I'm so impressed by her ability to build relationships with all the students. She just doesn't do the students in her classroom, she does it with all the students across the board and across the campus. She gives up time with her family to spend at Mark Twain, and even when I call her in a moment's notice, say, "Sidney, could you help me out with this?" She's always willing, and ready, and able to do whatever is asked of her, with a smile and just such a positive attitude. And so, I'm so greatly honored that our staff chose her as our Classified Employee, and it's my distinct honor to introduce to you Ms. Sidney Abbott.
Hi. I'm used to speaking in front of kindergarteners, so I'm going to pretend you're all 5 and 6 year olds. Calario, thank you, Mr. Tunnel. A lot of what I was going to say. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to thank all the staff. I work with wonderful teachers. Actually, I'm just going to read what I wrote, because I'm very nervous. Okay. I joined the staff at Mark Twain in 2009, when a friend of--
With help?
Yes, thank you. When a friend of mine told me about the perfect job at the school she was working at, and it was, it was, it really was. My youngest daughter just started 1st grade, and I needed, I had some extra time, so I thought, "Okay." But after 10 years of being lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom, I started as a part-timer in a tutoring room and lunch duty aide. I was in that position for about four years, and I really enjoyed it, but full-time kindergarten came along, and I'm really glad I applied for it. I really love, I love working with the little guys. I work with some fabulous teachers, and staff, and a lot of wonderful, great students, they're just all great. I come to work every day with a smile on my face. I want to thank everyone, Mark Twain family, that felt I was deserving of this award. And I also want to thank my family and friends for their continued support. So, thank you.
I love the group hug. That was planned, right, Ruth Lee? That group hug thing that you guys do? That's, they're just like family, they do that often. All right, I forgot my clicker. I need my clicker. From the mighty Pirate Land, Principal Zona, and I don't know who this guy is. Do I know you? Just came off the street. The lovely Ben Contine, of course.
Good evening, everyone. It is my extreme pleasure to introduce an integral member of our Seelager family, Mrs. Debbie Hartley. Debbie has taught for the past 13 years, all of which have been on the pirate ship. Besides being a phenomenal educator, Debbie enjoys being a wife to Rich, and a mama to Sarah, who is attending film school in Colorado, and Brett, who is attending UNR. She is our resident outdoor enthusiast as well, and you can find her many weekends, either hiking, gardening, camping, or enjoying outside playtime with the dogs. When walking into Debbie's classroom, the very first thing you notice is the respectful, positive tone that she creates for a learning environment. She expects that all of her students will learn and work to the best of their abilities, and her students know that they are completely cared for and loved, and there isn't anything more that you could ask a kindergarten student to feel from their very first experience at school. There is great value in being recognized by students, and so, Ms. Debbie, I'd like to share some of the sweet comments from our littlest members of the Seelager pirate family. "Mrs. Hartley is the best. I know she loves us because she hugs us every day." Another student said, "She is super-nice, and she keeps us safe. She helps us become smart." And my very favorite one was, "I love Mrs. Hartley because she loves to read to us." Indeed, Mrs. Hartley exemplifies professionalism and dedication to our students. Debbie comes each day with the determination to personally connect with her students, and her sweet spirit radiates in all that she does. She excels at successfully assisting struggling learners, as well as challenging our higher learners. She creates an environment that promotes excellence in education. She recently acquired her TESL endorsement, and she continues to challenge herself by taking courses to improve her own understanding and educational needs. Debbie's goal is to always focus on students first. She wants every student to learn and achieve in an environment that is safe and caring. She focuses on students with higher achievement levels who also need to be challenged with learning, and she keeps them wondering, asking questions, and growing every day. She focuses on students who might be achieving below expectations and creates a safe learning environment in which they take risks while learning the curriculum. Debbie serves our school in a greater capacity by being on our leadership team, and she shows leadership during weekly professional learning community meetings. Deb has also been a pirate pal, tutor, and contributed to our Reading Week Committee and Science Fair. So in closing, I would like to thank our district for recognizing the best of the best in our profession, and it is with great pride and joy that I present my friend, Mrs. Debbie Hartley, to you. We are truly blessed to benefit from her expertise.
Wow, thank you so much, Mrs. Zona. I just want to say thanks to my wonderful, 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 wonderful right arm, Mrs. Leslie Otto. I would not be able to do what I do without her. She's my parapro, and she comes, and she knows what I'm thinking before I'm thinking, or saying, before I'm saying it. So, Leslie, thank you so much. And I want to thank my administrative staff, because they are very supportive. Paula is always listening to all of the things that we want to work on. I thank you for that. I love my children, they bring me joy, and I love my job.
Lindsay, I want to let you know that she couldn't make it to the interviews, but I saw her in her classroom and took a picture of her. So, there is no end to my paparazziness.
I guess you caught her in action. So, the special thing about tonight is that our staff recognized not only Debbie, but as she also mentioned, her right-hand gal, Leslie Otto, who is a kindergarten paraprofessional on our pirate ship. And so, for the two of them to be recognized together is really special, because they're really together all the time. It is with great pride and joy that I introduce Mrs. Leslie Otto as the Seelager Elementary Classified Employee of the Year. As a proud 4th-generation Nevadan and Carson High graduate, Leslie has been involved in Carson City Schools as an active volunteer and employee since her own children started school. She has been Kent's proud wife for the past 32 years, and she enjoys being a proud mama to Ally, Amanda, Molly, and Mallory. You can imagine the excitement that fills the air when she speaks of her daughters and of her family. Leslie's parents also play a very big role in her life, and she consistently helps them and ensures that they are able to fulfill their bucket list items. So in her spare time, Leslie is quite the sports enthusiast, as her girls are involved in many sports activities. When she's not with her family, shopping is among her favorite hobbies, along with being our own resident Martha Stewart, sharing her creative crafts with us. She even organized our volunteer picnic this year, and I wish I would have brought you an invitation, it was just darling, that she made everyone by hand. Professionally, where do I even begin to share the many reasons of why Leslie was selected? Mrs. Otto has performed in an exemplary manner as a paraprofessional in our kindergarten classrooms. She's had plenty of opportunities to show how flexible and helpful she can be. It's not easy taking care of 50 kindergartners every day, and their parents, and staff. She considers it to be a privilege to work with our youngest students that make us--
She considers it to be a privilege to work with our youngest students that make us smile each day. Her main goal is to impact our students in some capacity. Her follow-through is impeccable, and I take great comfort in knowing that she is so trustworthy and dependable and around our students every day, making a great example. In fact, she exhibits exceptional professionalism and is well-loved at school by all. In talking with various staff members, some of the comments from our Pirate family include, "Leslie has always been a team player. She's a hard worker, and she definitely is deserving of being recognized for her work ethic and attention to detail. We are very fortunate to have her at Seeliger. Leslie is truly loved and adored by all of those who get to have her in their lives." Indeed, Leslie loves kids, and they love her. Her natural demeanor is one that consists of sincere love of children, honesty, humor, and the desire to serve others. You just simply enjoy being around Leslie. She has enjoyed, excuse me, she has enriched our school beyond belief. Leslie, thank you for being a terrific example of what is right with our school. You help make Seeliger the kind of place that people want to be at, warm and friendly and one that cares about one another. And so with that, I thank you. Come on down, Leslie.
I thought we were just gonna have, like, donuts and coffee. I didn't know we had to go through this whole thing. And the picture. I was hoping the kids could have drawn a picture. But I really am, I love my job. Like, when I'm gone, I can't wait to get back and see the kids. And I love working with my teacher, Mrs. Hartley. She's amazing. And who doesn't love working with five-year-olds? They make us laugh every day. They make us cry. I mean, sometime, I fell out of a chair one day, because I was laughing so hard. But there's just so many things that they bring to us. And this one little boy, one day, he said to me, "Mrs. Otto?" And I go, "Yes?" And he goes, "My brother had strep throat." And I go, "I knew what he was saying, too." I was so excited. He was telling us that his brother had strep throat, but I was so excited that I knew I could understand what he was saying. But thank you so much, and I love my job, and I thank the district for having us, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zona. Coming up, from Student Support Services, Director Jan Albertson. And I know she's got a bunch of flowers. I saw her walking in with them. You need some help there, Jan? You got it? You sure? As you can tell, Jan needs no mic. Everybody here, Jan? Can I, can I help you with that, Jan? No, you got it.
I don't wanna kill ya. Not yet, anyway. You get, yeah, those, those little kitchen chairs are kind of giving away. You guys want a seventh-inning stretch or anything? And my option is to go home and scrape the house with my husband, who said that'd be a great way to get in shape, so I might filibuster this thing. So stand up if you need to. Let's go. The PDC Student Support Services Educator of the Year goes to my colleague and friend, Kristy Winder. She began in Carson City as a parapro in 1988, when she was hired by Ruth Abisteri. She then took a leave of absence in 1995 to be a mom and go back to school. That was granted by the Board with the caveat that she return when she got her degree. True to her word, she did. And she was then rehired back by Mrs. Kima at 7:00 at night in 2004, offered her a speech pathology job. She worked her way up to department head at Carson High, where I found her languishing and stole her to Student Support Services, where she became the program support that she is today. You know, those facts are easy. I don't know what your working environment is, but if you have a Kristy who is a kindred spirit, you will understand how hard it is for me to put into words what she means. That said, I'm going to try. I'm gonna try, because Kristy always tries. I've seen her thrown into innumerable situations with very little background, and she continues to amaze me with her ability to field it all. Kristy is resourceful and efficient. She always gives anything I give her 110%. The only thing she loves more than her job is being a mother to her beautiful children and her family. And in both roles, she follows through and has such a positive attitude that we've all nicknamed her Pollyanna. She's gonna kill me for telling you that. Kristy handles students who have become disenfranchised, either by nature or by nurture. See, in this job, we have to decide daily whether we're gonna practice compassion or blame. Every day, we have to decide whether we're gonna be flexible and try to make things better, or if we're gonna be unyielding and compound the problem. Kristy is so good at her job, simply because she is the most compassionate person that I know. She seems genetically incapable of blaming people or fault-finding. She is flexible and never compounds issues. Now that said, Kristy can be incited to lose to Pollyanna in specific circumstances. If you would like to see this for yourself, simply tell her this child is too far gone, not worth the effort, or doesn't belong with these other kids. One example came this year. We discovered a student with no wheelchair, because the involved medical community had determined that the child probably wasn't gonna make it. I had to pull Pollyanna off the ceiling for a few days, several times, because she is compassionate, but she also seeks justice and dignity for students with whom we work. Student support often asks the systems to accommodate students who don't readily fit into them, which is difficult. We do that to you daily. We ask schools to do more than they believe they can. We have to help people understand the complex student rights and how to apply them with limited resources. We meet children in the most austere of circumstances, and sometimes the level of suffering just gets overwhelming. We've sat with each other on more than one occasion, looking at these daunting tasks with broken hearts and feeling helpless. We've wanted to give up, but luckily, Mr. Stokes never on the same day. More than once, we have to look at each other and say, "Well, if we're not gonna do this, then who will?" And we dive back in together. Through it all, Kristy has been, you know, new. When she said, "I'm gonna be the first one to cry," I thought, "Oh, I'm gonna be the second now. Don't give permission." Kristy has been a phenomenal role model to me. I swear she's a weebel. She may wobble, but she does not fall down. Kristy is my colleague. She is my ready support. She is the one person with whom I can speak frankly and know that she will accept me, and then we'll get moving on. My mother used to say that people will know you by the company you keep. I am honored to keep company with you, Winder. And I thank you. Congratulations, Pollyanna Winder. Come on down. See, I have a kid who's getting a degree in gender and race relations, so I had to go gift card and flowers, Jason. Can I get a hug?
I just have to thank the Board, because it was the Board in 1995 that let me continue my education. So they agreed that I could go, and then you guys brought me back, so thank you. The administration supports me daily. The teachers, the office staff, the pairs, they're always there for me. And I have to say, listening to everybody and what they do, every site in this district works as hard as they say they are. I am very fortunate to be in every site weekly, and every teacher is always there for the children, and they, they work on these teens, and it's just an honor to be working in this district, so thank you.
I have to tell a story, because when Jan calls me, it's typically, "Oh, Jose, I have you on speaker with Kristy." And now I just wait, because when Jan calls me and says, "You're on speaker," I go, "Hi, Kristy." And she's usually in the background.
Thinking about getting, like, three-legged pants, we can walk around here. Jesse, is it kosher to ask you to come on down now? Yeah, you know it, huh? I wanted Jesse to show you what he does for us. He's, I'd like to introduce y'all to Jesse Palmer. Who needs no introduction? Really. I wanted Jesse to show you what he does for us. And I, we haven't gone through this either. This is totally off the cuff. This is how Jesse rolls. It's easier to look at than for me to explain it. It's also a good trick to get you to look at him, not me, because I hate public speaking. I hate it, I hate it, I hate it. Okay. Jesse, Jesse started working for the Carson City School District in 2006 as, it's 2008. Sorry, I put you here two years long. It's all that skill. As an instructional assistant for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, it is important to note that his mother-in-law, Melanie Reader, asked him to just stop by and talk to some people, which turned out to be an interview with Keith Crossgarry and Marcy Wilson. Oh, and because Melanie said, "Just stop by," it's important to note that he was wearing flip-flops, shorts, and a T-shirt. That says a lot about the skill set, because he was essentially hired on the spot, beach wear and all. This was a Thursday afternoon. By Monday morning, he had reported to work, having passed the drug test and filled out all the paperwork. He hadn't seen the job description, didn't know what he was gonna get paid. So if Melanie Reader hadn't sat next to Marcy Wilson in the opening Carson High meeting of 2008, Jesse may not be here. Melanie, I want to thank you for picking your seat wisely. At the risk of oversimplifying it, Jesse is the interpreter mentor for our district, and that would be simple if that's where it stopped. By law, each of our six interpreters have to have 216 hours of personal PD a year. That means that Jesse delivers about 4,000 of those hours personally to them combined. That is a full-time job. But he probably wouldn't even have gotten the word in my department if that's all he did, because Jesse never says no. He also handles all of our technology needs, web design, equipment maintenance, grant finding, and even burst pipe building move-out support. I have to tell y'all, if you don't know that you need one of those, you need one of those. I found that out this year. He can, he is continually on the lookout for opportunities to better serve the deaf and hard-of-hearing community at large, because Jesse has a servant's heart. That heart is best seen in the story of a small girl who came to the school district three years ago with no language because of her deafness. I observed when she had arrived, came in to observe Jesse, and she was unable to sign anything but a word or two. The next year I got there to observe Jesse, and he reported to me that she's signing now, but I looked suspicious, so she wouldn't do it in front of me. The third year, this year, I went in to observe. She signed to me for two minutes about the Valentines in her backpack. She decorated me a cookie. She gave me a name sign. She subsequently signed books to her peers throughout the school, and when she was recently praised, she spontaneously signed, "I know, I'm smart." That is the best part of what Jesse does. He gives words to the wordless. I don't know what you or I will accomplish this week, but Jesse will use his formidable skills and courage to enter a world few of us can, and he will change lives. He will give students the opportunity to connect with other human beings who before didn't have that chance. He will expand beyond himself the need, to the needs of those kids, who through no choice of their own, live a life in isolation and alienation. He will be their mentor, and he will be their friend. They will bring, he will bring excellence to them. He will break through the silence barrier that keeps them apart, and he will connect them to the life stream going on around them. He will grant them chances to belong. It is my joy and my privilege to call him my friend and my colleague, and I do so with great pride. Thank you, Jesse. And then I started tearing up, and I couldn't read. We went gift card and flowers.
Very equitable. Funny enough, this is not my first time interpreting. I had the opportunity to interpret for Marcy Wilson, the previous teacher of the deaf. That time, we actually had a deaf person in the room. Generally, I am very comfortable in front of large, large groups of people, because I'm usually interpreting, and they're not my words. When I'm, when I do it myself, I am truly humbled by the opportunity to be a power for these students' lives and the improvement of all of our staff. I feel that I'm able to reach so many more students that way by direct, one-on-one, and improving the standards of all of our interpreters. I look out on this room, and I feel humbled, because I have been at each and every one of your sites in one way or another, whether it's delivering hearing aid batteries or everything.
S backtesting.
Yeah, it's just everything. And this happened amid a flood. If you haven't heard, our building was flooded, and somehow the vote still got tallied, so here we are. But I am truly humbled to be a part of such a special group of students and empowering them and literally becoming their voice.
All right, Jesse, come on back up. Just one more thing. Thank you. All righty. This is when I get to embarrass Janice. She has a great staff-- Can you hear me? Okay. Great staff member in Naomi Redwine. And Janice, come on up.
It is my pleasure to honor, or is my honor to be here to talk about Naomi Redwine, who's hiding in the back. So come front, come up front, please. Naomi is the Administration PDC Classified Employee of the Year, and she's been with the school district for over eight years in various capacities. She's been a nude aide, she's been an office specialist, a parapro with special education and a substitute teacher. All while she was doing these various jobs, she earned her Bachelor of Science in Information Technology Management and was looking for a place in order to start her IT career. So when there was an opening in my, my department, I got a bunch of calls from administrators and teachers urging me to give her a chance, recommending that I try her out as an employee and that I wouldn't be sorry. The one thing they didn't tell me, that at 7:00 in the morning, she comes in bright and cheery, and I need to have my coffee before I get to the office. Other than that, we don't gel. But other than that, I can say that everything that they said about Naomi was true. Naomi is hard-working, she's self-start, a self-starter, and she has that attitude that, she never tells me she can't do anything. She tells me, "I'll go try. I've never done it before, but I'll go try." And that alone is one of the reasons that I respect and appreciate Naomi and her work attitude. She's also a pleasure to have in the office, and she actually has kind of been a calming, calming presence in our office. And as the main tech or support for the one-to-one initiative, I've gotten a lot of compliments about her professionalism and the fact that she'll just jump in wherever she's needed. And with that, I'd just like to say, Naomi, we appreciate having you part of the team. I didn't get you flowers, because you told me no flowers. You want it with the guys' guy.
Those were some very, very kind words. Thank you, Janice. I was really surprised when they, you know, said that I, I got a employee of the year, because I work with just wonderful, great people, who are all deserving. But in my little staff, I work with just positive and supportive people that without them, I wouldn't be able to serve the students and staffs as I do. An outstanding director that just leads the way. So I am truly honored, and thank you very much. So I am truly honored, and thank you very much.
She is a calming presence. You should see them without Naomi there. They just run amok in IT. I'm not sure if Paul is here. Is Paul here? I don't know. But he's our senior groundskeeper, Mr. Feeling. Do you want to say a couple of words, or just say hi to the audience? You want to tell me about your Milwaukee Bucks? He can do anything. He's, he's a money guy.
Hello, all. Paul Bigler is an outstanding individual, and I would just like to draw your attention to this wonderful picture. You notice the hat on his head. It is that of the finest football team in America, the Green Bay Packers. Paul is a great guy. And we, we cried together after that Seahawks loss. So that's it, thank you very much.
Always gotta pack the Packers in there. Thank you, Mr. Feeling. Nicely done. I, I just want to say, before Shiri comes up here, how awesome you have been in your rookie year as a supervisor, Shiri. I, truly, really great job. I think I'm on your speed dial often. But I truly love working with you this first year, and thank you for all your hard work. Come on up, Shiri.
Can I adjust this? I would like to introduce to you Jan Elam, Classified Employee of the Year, Transportation Department. Jan Elam has been a special needs bus attendant since August of 2002. I've been in the Transportation Department 17 years, so of that 17 years, I've known her for almost 13. Yes. She's very caring, loyal, just a wonderful person. And she, her and I both come to work at six o'clock in the morning, so it's probably close to our bedtime right now. The kids that she works with, they love her, and she's one of the first people that the students see on the bus. And so dedicated, I don't know how many of you would be this dedicated at eight years old. Coming to work with a smile on her face every day. She had breast cancer about five years ago, and he had surgery, underwent chemo and radiation, and she is, five years, cancer-free. And also, she did lose her husband two years ago, and she still is so dedicated and just always comes to work cheerful, smile on her face, ready to go, six o'clock in the morning.
And eight o'clock.
Yeah. But all the people at, we are like a close-knit family at the Transportation Department. We, we've been through a lot together, and I just love this lady, and she is very deserving of it. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody, and especially the people in Transportation Department that nominated me and voted for me. And they're all deserving. And we are the first ones that the kids see in the morning, and probably the last ones in the afternoon, when we take them home. And to repeat what everybody else has said, I love my job, and I love the children. They're all special. Even though they're special needs, they are very special and precious. Thank you, everybody.
And then, don't forget your award. Mr. White? There you go. All right, you guys, here it is. We're now down to the final two. Who is gonna be the Classified Person of the Year? I know. Who's gonna be the Teacher of the Year? You don't know. Very exciting. So because Mr. White has been so patient and, and handing out awards tonight, thank you, Mr. White, we're gonna start with the Classified Employee of the Year. Who is? Jesse Palmer. Come on up, Jesse. And truly, look at this plaque. It says Jesse Palmer on it, so we, we know it's you. Jesse, who's this little guy?
This is Everett.
Hi, Everett. What's up, dude?
This is my way of not having to sign anymore.
Okay. Do you want to say a few words, Jesse?
Well, I'm even more honored to be chosen as the Classified Employee of the Year. I love what I do each and every day. And I have my biggest fan here, who also has his first word and first sign. Sadly, neither of them were daddy. But truly, education is important in my family. I have a mother-in-law, a wife, sister-in-law, brother and mother who span between special ed teachers, speech pathologists, principals, and teachers. And I have a proud heritage in education, and I hope that continues on. It is wonderful what we have the privilege to be a part of in these children's lives in Carson City. And again, just very honored. Thank you.
He's just looking at me like I'm from outer space. It's okay, I am. Jesse, you, you get a bunch of stuff. There is a $100 Amazon card in here for you. Check out the baby section, it's, it's wide open. Just, yeah, you've probably seen it out.
Should I just give this to you?
What do you think?
Should I just give that to you?
Can you say something? No, he's, he's, I've heard him all night till now. What's up? Okay, so Jesse, congratulations. And you also get a day off, but you have no time left. So you gotta use it for the end of the year.
Alrighty.
Congratulations. You want the foam? It's really healthy for you. Jesse Palmer, everybody. All right, Teacher of the Year, what can I tell you? I saw her earlier this evening, just kind of sitting on her own. She was on her phone. I said, "What are you doing?" She goes, "I'm doing Edmodo." Saying, "Really? You're really doing Edmodo?" And she said, "Yeah, I've got a whole bunch of stuff I gotta send to my kids tonight." And I said, "You are such a geek." Jennifer Chandler.
I would just like to say thank you as I've sat here this evening, listening to all that you do. I'm very humbled to be the recipient of this. Good teachers are geeks. I think every one of us out there would say that. But I appreciate, appreciate you all very, very much, and it is an honor and privilege to work with you. So thank you very much.
She's already got the Amazon card spent. She just zipped it on her iPhone. It's all spent. Thank you, everybody. I've gotta tell you, it's been a great night. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. I appreciate all our staff, really the best staff in Nevada. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for all the families.
Well, to all of you, it has been a special evening, and congratulations, and thank you for all that you do for our students. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn here in just a minute so we can congratulate you, but because of you, Carson City, the Carson City School District is not just a good school district, it's a great school district. Okay, with that, we're gonna go on to our last agenda item. And that's any future agenda items? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.